Fourteen people yesterday. So they made a stream of flames. It was my state. And it looks better. I went down to the dock and did that thing. Four people came over to put it out. I brought a plan kit. And I swept the little area. I think what it's called. Oh, yeah. I swept that. And I don't know if there's any water source. They take poison. Then the light post, not the light post, the sign, it's crushed. And I think it was hit in an accident. It has been put back up. It's really, it bothers me every time I drive by here. Maybe it's supposed to be like that. I'll rest my desk.
Welcome, we're gonna call the November twenty-fifth Redler City Council meeting. With that, I will ask the city clerk to call you all.
Russ Brown.
Present.
Darcy Long Curtis. Present. Rod Runyon.
Here.
Linda Miller. Your Tim McLaughlin.
Here.
Mayor Mays.
Here. I would like to call on Councilor Rod Runyon to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're physically able.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to entertain a motion now to approve the agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda is presented. Second.
It's a motion to second it to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Motion carries. Item five, presentations and proclamations. Our first presentation is to honor three people that are here present tonight. Three special people, Lisa Commander, Robert Maxwell, and David Tuttle. And with that, I will turn our presentation over to Councilor Rod Runyon.
Over the years, I've had an opportunity to meet a lot of people that have been on the Honor Flight to Washington DC for their service to our country. But I wasn't a city councilor then, so I have a unique opportunity to make this particular introduction special and really to thank all veterans for their service. And that's what these two gentlemen are here about tonight. But it's also important in the work that I do in my Veterans Adventacy that spouses are included because they go through so much when their family is involved in the service. And that's men and women. We have spouses that are not in the service, but they are the support at home. So that's why I've invited you all here. So first, I'd like to bring up Robert Max Maxwell and Jean. If you'd come up here, please. I'll give you a little bio on these two here. On Max, at the age of seventeen, Max attempted to join the Marines but was denied. However, his parents finally agreed to sign for him to join the Navy. He was inducted into the Navy in Portland in nineteen fifty-one and after boot camp in San Diego, joined the deck force as a seaman aboard the fleet tug USS Chickasaw ATF eighty-three, serving in San Diego, Korea, and numerous South Sea Islands. He then served on the bridge as quartermaster, navigator, signalman, where he messaged by flags, lights, and radio in addition to mastering the skills of reading the stars and piloting the ship. When the Vietnam War commenced, Max immediately joined the Naval Reserves and served more than thirty years, concluding his military service as an E-eight Senior Chief SCPO. He serves currently on a number of committees. The Columbia Veterans Memorial Committee, the Wasco County Veterans Advisory Committee. He's a member of the VFW and the American Legion, and he volunteers at the Wasco County Veteran's Service Office and at the Columbia Gorge Veterans Museum. And his wife Jean is right there with him on those activities and is our lead board member at the Columbia Gorge Veterans Museum and was our volunteer coordinator at the Veteran's Service Office for a number of years. And her son, back there, Russ Jones, is our VSO at the Veteran's Service Office. Next, I want to bring up the Tuttles. David and Bev Tuttle. Scoot around this way, folks. Let me get you on the camera over there. Again, a team right here. But I'm gonna read Corporal David Tuttle's bio. U.S. Army, Korea, fifty-two to fifty-four. Saw action in Korea with the Forty-Fifth Division, Hundred and Seventy-Ninth Regiment, First Battalion, Company C. He was a BAR, Browning Automatic Rifle Expert, a riflemen on the Heartbreak Ridge. He served as squad leader on Christmas Hill and was wounded near Queen's Outpost on July twentieth, nineteen fifty-two. Corporal Tuttle received two Bronze Battle Stars for his participation in the Battle of Christmas Hill. He later transferred to the Fifth Regimental Combat Team, Company B, in February of nineteen fifty-three and served on Kojidoo Island for five months as a squad leader. He served his last three months stateside with the Forty-fourth Division at Fort Lewis, Washington. And now I want to bring up a real important part of the Honor Flight. Lisa Commander was a guardian on the flight. And the Maxwells also had, was it your son-in-law?
Yes, U.S. Navy.
Navy veteran Jack Fournier?
Yes, sir.
Was a guardian as well. Lisa, let's scoot around this way, folks. I said, just watch me. Keep coming, keep coming. Lisa is our current Director of the Columbia Gorge Veterans Museum on Second Street, right by the Legion Hall, which is now turning into another facility, and has been responsible from day one of changing the exhibits and keeping Jean and I busy down there from time to time. By the way, I'll be the receptionist tomorrow from one to five. Come visit. Helps the time go by. And she is going to become the Education Director here shortly of the Discovery Center out on Highway Thirty. And we'll be looking for another Director. She's promised not to desert us too quickly, but we're always looking for board members as well, so. But anyway, I just want to thank you all personally. And the mayor has a proclamation here for you, and I'll let him do that part.
This is a certificate of recognition for Lisa Commander, Mr. Tuttle, and Mr. Maxwell. And Rod's biography pretty much details all of the details of the certificate. And I'll just read the last paragraph, and it says, "On behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the Dawes, please accept our sincere gratitude for your service to our veterans and representing our community on the Honor Flight to Washington DC." Thank you all very much.
Let's get a picture of Max. Turn around, face the camera now.
Giant smiles. There you go. Thank you so much. Like, work with professionals all the time.
Thank you all for your service. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Mayor.
Thank you, Council Runyon. Thank you all very much. Looks like Candy and Randy have a coffee at the table. Now here are the presentations. Candy Armstrong, Superintendent of Schools, providing the long-range facilities plan update.
Yeah, this is going to seem really mundane after that. Wonderful. So Candy Armstrong, Superintendent of Long Wasco County School District, Thirty-sixth, Thirty-two West Sixth Street. And I just wanted to bring the council up to speed on what we're doing with our long-range facilities plan because we are just about to the end of that process. We have one more meeting scheduled for December tenth at six o'clock at the Dawes Middle School Library. But hopefully in your package, you have three slides that I just wanted to go over with you in terms of what we're looking at. And so on the first page, the overview of the facilities that were assessed in terms of the square footage and the year built and the address. And then the next page has to do with the Facility Condition Index. And that is the standard benchmark. And as you notice on that page, it tells you that a value close to ten percent or below is in good condition, while a value over thirty percent is in poor condition and needs to be replaced. So we go on to take a look at the Department of Education Assessment Summary. And as you go down through there, you'll see what is on one side, the repair budget total for each of those sites, and then the replacement budget, and then the Facility Condition Index is on the far right. So this is just meant to give you an update of where we are. Be aware that the repair and the square footage does not include any of the modulars that we have. This is just the buildings themselves that this refers to. So if you have any questions, that's why I have Randy here. I thought if you got into detail, I'd need some help, so. Do you have any questions for us?
Anybody have any questions? Council Runyon, if you had to take this list and do some kind of an order, what two buildings would be the top priority out of this list?
So that's the next step on the tenth is what we will be doing is trying to prioritize. And we may need one additional meeting if we do. That would be in early January, then we need to get this finalized and that ten-year plan sent in. So we really invite the public to come and take a look at this material. It can be found on the website, but we actually need the community to work with us and help us make that determination. And when we send this in, you could, obviously, you can change your mind later on, but the plan itself needs to be in in order for us to go forward in the future with any bond planning because that would be part of narrowing down what you would want to do for a bond. And then it would, this particular plan being accepted by the state will make us eligible for up to four million dollars in matching. Not guaranteed that we could get it, but we certainly want to put in for that.
And I will push you for even to talk to you because we need the public to do that, so I appreciate that. I want to put any seeds out there.
I think the public really needs to take a look at it and give a standpoint. On the tenth, where? On the tenth of the Dawes Middle School, up in the library at the middle school. Starting at six p.m.
Council McLaughlin, on the year built, there are multiple years for some of the schools. Why is that?
Well, for example, on Colonel Wright, there were parts of the building that were added and or significantly built onto during those. That's why you have the different years.
I see one missing to the Dawes High School, the Skill Center, that doesn't seem to be included. I think that was built in the seventies, nineteen seventy-four, I think, seventy-five. Skill Center?
The addition of that, yeah. It covers the different sites of the Dawes High School, but it didn't list that particular piece of things up.
Following up on Council Runyon's question, if you look at the thirty percent threshold for being in poor condition, it looks like three of the schools, the Watanaka, Colonel Wright, and the high school, all exceed the thirty percent level. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
So it'd be fair to say that those three schools are in poor condition?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Our final presentation is from District Councilor Darcy Long Curtis and our Assistant to the City Manager Matthew Williams regarding the recent Community Outreach Team trip to Washington DC.
Well, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and Members of Council. As you stated, Councilor Long Curtis and I are here to update you on the recent trip to Washington DC as part of the Community Outreach Team. As you know, this team is made up of community partners, community stakeholders such as D twenty-one, the county, the city, of course, the college, and the port. And they travel to Washington DC once or twice a year to advocate for the needs and issues or projects that our community has. As you can see in the Agenda Staff Report, the team brought a number of different projects and policies that our community is facing to discuss with legislators and their staff. And this outreach and advocacy not only helps communicate our needs to our representatives, but it also provides us with a substantial amount of information on where potential funding sources may be, potential new partners or partners we haven't reached out to, and different ways to think or approach a certain project or a policy that we might be grappling with. We also learn about the current mindset or some of the buzzwords that are kind of the hot topic in Washington DC. And when we were there this past trip, two of the ones that stuck out to me were pre-disaster mitigation and resiliency. Those two phrases or that phrase and that word seem to highlight some of the priority issues or areas of most concern that were pressing some of the legislators. And when we're writing a grant or seeking out funding, using some of those buzzwords can be of assistance. This most notably applied to the East Cascade Interconnection Project. That is looking at feasibility study to explore the possibility of maintaining the connection that we have towards the east, away from the Cascade Mountains, to maintain the communication network that we have, the internet access that we have in the event or when the Cascadia earthquake occurs. The Tree Yoke Skill Center was another project that seemed to impress many of the people that we met with, not only for the project itself, but for the collaboration that has brought that project into existence. That project used support and funds from the state, from the city, from the county, from the port, and many others to bring that project forward. And we met with the Department of Education, the National, oh, we're blank, National Association of Community Colleges, and they were very impressed by the scope of that project and what we were trying to accomplish. And Department of Labor, yes. And I think this highlights another key takeaway for me, which was the team itself. What I really appreciated on that trip was that the people who went on the team are not just advocating for their own project, a project that is the city's or not is not the city's. We're looking out for the best of the community, that benefits the entire community. And we really show to the people that we are meeting with that this is one community with all of us pouring together on these projects that affect us all. And finally, and before I went, this is kind of amusing to me, but in some of the preparation work that we did, all the members who had gone previously mentioned these small tokens of appreciation that we give to the people we meet with. And these are small bags of chocolate-covered cherries.
No, they're agricultural products of de minimis value.
Thank you. Agricultural products of de minimis value. And they are a hit. And they really help to tie that relationship that the team has developed and grown over their many visits. They know the Dawes, they know Wasco County, they know the community, and it helps to stick in their mind as they meet from group to group.
You thought we were exaggerating, except that everyone said, "Oh, are you the cherry people?"
No, it's very true. It's a highly effective tool, it seems like. And I think one thing to note is that these policies and projects that we are going back to Washington DC with are often long-term projects. They take a long time to develop, just like the relationships that the team grows over their visits. And some of the policies or some of the projects, most notably the economic development funding through the National Scenic Area, are things that we have worked on for quite some time. And you need to have that consistent presence to have cautious optimism that there will be process and progress going forward. So those are some of the key highlights for me. It was a great experience. It was a great team that went. And I'll turn it over to Councilor Long Curtis to add anything else.
Sure. Did you want to name the team members or?
Oh, sure.
So on this particular trip, we had Greg Leest and Andrea Class from the Port of the Dawes. We had Scott Higgy from Wasco County and Randy Anderson from District Twenty-One, as well as Dan Spotts from Columbia Gorge Community College, and myself and Matthew representing the Dawes. And of course, in the staff report, you can see the long list of meetings that we attended. And you can see from this list that we spent a lot of time running around to all of the different Congress people, senators. We did leave one off. We did also see Senator Patty Murray because we do visit both the Washington and the Oregon delegation because, of course, we have the airport and some other things in common. We weren't able to speak with her personally, but we did take the cherries to her constituent coffee, and so we sort of stole the coffee attention. But we didn't get a one-on-one with her. But it is important, and we were talking about one of the major projects, and, you know, we're cautiously optimistic, but the scenic gorge, as we know, when that was funded, we got our money for econo, or, excuse me, we did not get our money for economic development fully funded. We only got the environmental and the tourism fees funded. And so we have been working for very many years. When I say we, I mean the community outreach team, which has been many members, and to the point that that line item was actually struck from the federal budget. It didn't exist anymore. And because we lobbied and we found a way, we got it back in. And right now, if it goes through reconciliation, we might actually, what was that, look? So that's just some of the hard work. And I know sometimes people wonder why we go back twice a year and is it really worth the money? But I really do believe that it is.
Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the Councilor or for Matthew? Thank you very much. Item six is audience participation. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject which does not later appear on the agenda. Five minutes per person will be allowed. If a response by the city is requested, this speaker will be referred to the City Manager for further action, which may appear on a future meeting agenda for City Council consideration. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the City Council on any item that is not on the agenda? Mr. Dunning?
Yes.
Please give your name and address.
Gary Dunning, eighteen fourteen Minnesota Street, Dallas, Oregon.
Could you use the microphone?
I need that or that's just for records?
Records.
They want you on camera.
I like to stand. Where does my time start? Right now?
As soon as you start the presentation.
I have no presentation. You might have seen some signs, billboards out that look similar like that. Orange in color says, "Break the Silence." Does anybody know what the silence is? Have you checked it? I didn't know until a couple of months ago. The silence is sex trafficking, teenage sex trafficking, and slavery. More slavery today in the United States than there was during the Civil War. The most active city we have down there, called the Rose City, is the most prolific category, not in Oregon, but in the United States. What is teenage? Thirteen years old is the average age, down to two and three. These people come in and they try to buy, sell, or steal children, teenagers, whatever. If you go to that, anybody go to that hashtag on there that says, "H-Day Film"? Look at that. It's typical, it's documentary, but it's typical of what happened to a sixteen-year-old young lady. The people in her school, I'm gonna call them classmates, no, but they sold her for their own drug money. She was used for eight days, fifty times in eight days. Sold, and imagine that. I go and talk to whoever I can get in, and I talk to the mayor, and he said, "Yeah, you've got five minutes." So I'm down here to encourage you to break the silence. Tell your friends, your neighbors, look out for those little ones. I've got great-grandchildren that are in this group, from sixteen down to about five and six, two and a half, and they live in Portland, the other two are here. So they're in vulnerable areas. People will come into their homes and steal these young people right out of their home. They'll take them away from parks, out of automobiles. It's a silent epidemic that we need to be aware of. That's all. Watch your children. You cannot, we kept our little great-granddaughter, almost continues since she was two years old. Taught her that if we have that eye contact, you're all right with us. But if you're going over there, we can't see you, and you can't see us, don't go there. A few weeks ago, we were up at the shoulder for, in the park, for a birthday party. She comes over and tells grandma, "I've gotta go to the bathroom." She did that by herself. She's learned that. Keep that eye contact. So time has got up. Who's timing me?
I am.
Yeah.
You're actually doing very well. You got, you got minutes.
Well, that's all. It's a silent epidemic out there. Do what you can to tell your people. You know, somebody that I could go preach my silent message to, I would gladly go. I've been to the schools. I've been to the Qantas, I've been to the Lions. Now I've been to the City Council and, let's see, a hospital, a couple of businesses that I think have a large group. And they, I know, as you know, some of you, you take a training, safety program every now and then. They could bring this up. I do feel that the churches could do nothing more than just put it in their bulletins or in their newsletters, but give us a signal on this. This is an epidemic. You know, we are familiar with what, the swine flu and myself, because of family, probably all epidemic that was going on back then. This is... This is much worse. So Mike, you're talking.
Hang on just a second. Does anybody have any questions they want to ask Eric? You mentioned some of the groups you've talked to, have you taught any law enforcement people?
I guess this gentleman sitting in the back, I've chatted with him a few times, yes. In fact, I guess we made a visit to the coffee break one day, and I can say he's fully wants to know, if you see anything, call him. Nine-one-one. He would rather get one hundred calls, no problem, than one that they missed. I can say that to that gentleman back there.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I lose that all the time.
Next on the agenda are reports. We'll start with the city management report.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. The city received an invitation for the Festival of Cheese event, which is December sixth, so I just wanted to let the city council know if any of you would like to attend as representatives of the city, if you would please let myself or I send them know for the next couple of days, we will get you the tickets for that. And I have a request for the use of our safety funds. We have learned that we have to do a different kind of crane training than we've ever done before. It used to be just a couple hundred dollars per person, it's way more than that to get this new training that's required by the state, so we are asking the city council to approve eighteen thousand sixty dollars to get everyone trained on the crane. And then I have a request for seven more of the standing desks that we've been kind of getting sporadically, and we now have twenty-eight hundred, for the total of twenty thousand eight hundred sixty dollars. We still have about forty-nine thousand in this year's budget of safe funds.
What was the total before? Under your old fees, what was the total?
Oh my gosh, I think it was only a couple hundred dollars per person.
How many, what was the rough total of that? It was around four thousand, like, I don't know, I guess, four thousand. For the crane.
I will vouch for the increase because we've done the things.
I just want to know what the difference was.
It's big.
Counselor Brown?
A question of whether we need to train everybody at Public Works to run the crane.
We have asked for volunteers, and we have four from each division.
Four for each division, yeah. So we're not training, we're training about half of them.
I would think about half that many would be plenty. I mean, the crane doesn't get used every day, it's not...
But you have to be certified to use it, so if two people are out sick on a crew, then you have to have someone who can do it.
But if you have four or five in the, in the agency, in Public Works, I don't understand why everybody has to be trained.
We went from, we originally thought we were gonna train everybody, if I may, and so we were training twenty-three or something like that, we went down to twelve, we only reduced the cost of the training by about four thousand dollars, because a bulk of the cost is just bringing the contractor on the site. The employee-specific cost to actually take the test and then get the certification is a few hundred dollars per employee, so if we even cut the twelve employees in half again, we aren't saving that much, but we're starting to give up our reliability, I guess, in being sure we have people available to do the job when it's needed.
Anybody else have any questions with the city manager? Thank you. The city attorney reported.
Now, please give a motion or consensus to spend the funds.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the funds for the crane certifications and the desks.
I'll say.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Most? Motion carries. Okay, the city attorneys reported.
Thank you, Mayor Mays. One item I want to share with the council, some months ago, we had a parcel of property that's off of West Seating Drive. It's a vacant lot that the city acquired through a foreclosure of taxes by the county, and it's been vacant for some time. The council declared surplus. The staff and local property feel that there could be a question about access for the property. If you've been by it, there's not a particular road that goes up by the property, there appears to be a dirt path, but we don't know where that is, the area that's shown us right away on the map, and so I've arranged with Tinsley Engineering to have the property surveyed, so we know exactly where the boundaries are and whether this dirt path is the area that shows the right of, so that we know that there is access for the property, because if there's not, that could affect its marketability. If there is access, the property survey can be developed for residential use, and it's a fairly, it's actually two lots that are together, it's fairly large, so we could be sold for development if it confirms that access. So Tinsley will be doing the survey, once we do that, then we'll be able to proceed with actually putting it out for some bids, and hopefully sell it, and get some money from the sale.
What is the address of that?
It doesn't have an address, it's, I'm trying to think of a close residence, there's a, on the map, there's a road called Will's Way that apparently hasn't been developed, but it's in that vicinity, and I'm trying to pick up the closest property, and I think it's about seven hundred block of West Seating Drive in that area, and you can't see it from the street.
Is that easy to see?
Uh, it may actually be easy to see, I think, to be easy. And it's, right now, there's a fair amount of vegetation that has sort of gone away, so the survey, I think they can get on the property much easier, and they said this is a good time of year to do the survey, so they'll do it, but it's kind of difficult to see as you're driving by, it's back away from Seating itself.
I can drive you up there if you're ready, let's see it.
Yeah, I'd, yeah, I'd like to look at it all.
Yeah, give me help.
All right.
But we think it does have the potential to be developed, if we can just make sure it's got access, so we'll know that once the survey's done.
And that's city-owned, or is it...
Yes, we acquired it from the county back in nineteen eighty-eight. It was given to us for no consideration, I don't know at that time what, it was discussed with the county, but they apparently didn't want it, and they gave it to the city, so we've had it since nineteen eighty-eight.
Any estimated value on that property?
I think the assessor has it in the range of thirty thousand dollars currently.
For both lots?
I think we've talked for both lots at this point. That's one entire lot. I've not talked to any realtor to see...
Needs considerable development.
We'll probably have a discussion with local realtors to determine, you know, if it does have access, what would be an appropriate price, but with the market now, with people looking for lots, we may be able to get more than what the assessor has the value at.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jane. Next on the agenda, the city council reports, we'll start with Counselor Miller.
Okay, on the eleventh, I attended the Veterans Day parade, and I saw Councilwoman a couple of times around the circle. The fifteenth...
I was on the moor side.
Yes, you were. On the fifteenth, the city council had a special meeting regarding the hiring of the city attorney, and on the nineteenth, the urban renewal meeting, and that was in regard to settling Tony's building. On the twentieth, I attended the Dow Sisters, the twentieth, and then again, this last Sunday, the Dow Sister City interviews, we are interviewing young people, our students here that will go to Japan in the summer. A good group so far that we've interviewed. On the twenty-second, I attended the ribbon cutting, re-grandopening of the Bedmire, and again, on this next Tuesday, I'll have more interviews. We have about seventeen applicants that want to go to Japan. That's students. There's, I believe there's seven that want to be chaperones. I've done.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
Let's see here, since the twenty-eighth, on October thirty-one, rules and conduct meeting, as we get that closer to fruition, the council will look at. On the also, the thirty-first, it was downtown to Halloween Crossing Garden, thank you, Tim, very much.
Welcome very much.
On November first, McCann held their economic forum, they do annually, and I was invited there as a board member of eight years, and served on four, four different McCann committees, actually, during that time. On the first of November also, that evening, and again, just this weekend, voluntary announcer for the state playoff games, and the mayor helped me, and his grandson Carter helped to spot the defense for me at the quarterfinal game out at the Sid White Field of Latontica. On the second, we had a funeral I want to mention here, because she was such a great community volunteer and a personal friend, Marla Skrye, passed away. People that ever came to a baseball game, the DOWs High, or Hustlers American Legion played, and she was, she was at the gate, and her husband was alive, he was there as well, bringing the flags out onto the field at home plate, so she will be missed. On the sixth of November, we had another rules and conduct meeting. On the seventh of November, a true life internet meeting on behalf of the city. Volunteer receptionist on the eighth of November at the Columbia Gorge Veterans Museum, we had the veterans parade, and I led the Patriot Guard Raiders around in circles a few times on that one. We had a council special session where we discussed the need for a city attorney and how that will take shape, and I think we were moving in that direction. And then on the sixteenth, again, there was another football game. Urban renewal meeting came just as a citizen observer, we already have three council people on the dais for that one, but I'm enjoying watching it from the back and answering my own questions, and encourage people to show up for that. On the twenty-first, I attended the Wasco County Pioneer Association, of which I'm a past president, and today, outside the Wired Veterans Committee at the Veterans Home today, a group that raises money for veterans' causes around the area and funds a band called Got Your Six. So if you go to see the band Got Your Six, local places, the money that they get paid goes right into this veterans' charity.
Ms. Miller? Thank you. Counselor Lon Curtis?
Thank you. So I also attended the executive session to talk about our next steps for funding a city attorney position, and I attended the urban renewal, and we did, as Counselor Miller said, we did select a proposal for the Tony's Building, and now Jean Parker is doing the exclusive negotiating agreement, correct? And then they'll be looking at the development and disposition agreement as well, so hopefully we'll get something put into that Tony's Building, right? And most of my time since the last meeting has been spent working, I guess, on the homeless and the warming shelter, so I started by going down and just talking with people, and I was contacted by someone from the Vancouver area who asked me to find a specific person that they were concerned about, and so through that process, trying to find that person, asking people their stories, locating that person, and trying to shepherd them through the process here in town, I just frankly discovered that the system is completely broken. I mean, I'll just be honest, I'm sorry. It sounds so good on paper, but it's just not working. I was not able to get this person, who I see is completely in need of services, any services. I picked her up three separate times and took her to appointments, just getting her there and finding her every time was a crisis, because she's homeless and I didn't know where to look for her, and the system requires that you come back for multiple appointments, you can't just go in once and get an evaluation. You have to go in and be seen in person, I couldn't make the appointment for her, and I had to bring her back a week later, and then I had to wait two weeks to bring her back for another appointment, and I was lucky to get that appointment two weeks away, because they told me they had forty-five days to do it. And this is a person that I felt was in imminent danger herself. Tonight is the first night that the warming shelter is open. No?
It's open last week.
Second.
Yeah.
Sorry. So, as you know, we've had some cold weather, and we're looking for more volunteers. There is a volunteer, I believe, from each church who handles each night's schedule. I am the overall schedule coordinator now, so if you need a name and number, if you want to work on a particular night, it's actually much easier than it seems to do. I'd love to talk to you about it. I just, I want to say that, and I also just want to point out that before we got the warming shelter open, there was an outbreak of scabies in one of the camps where people were in a group, and it's very contagious. And so I'm still working with the health department on how we're gonna handle this, but it's something as simple as the people have to, each person has to come to the medical appointment and get their own prescription, and then the prescription actually is for something that they have to put on their whole body, and then they have to shower it off the next day. And some of these people do not have access to that. Some people, the shelter does have showers, but not everyone is allowed, some people have had behavior and they're not allowed to be there. So we are working on possibly thinking outside the box and maybe bringing the medical people to the camp, and then doing something that way. But I just, I just want to encourage everyone not to make assumptions, and, you know, we all hear about the stereotypes of the people, but when I went and talked to people about their personal stories, I didn't hear anything like those stereotypes that we have. So I just want to say, I think these people are worth our time and our effort, and they are part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
I don't have too much time, in fact, but my chair broke a few minutes ago, and I'm going to take a moment to turn it upside down and find out what's going on.
Did you bring a utility knife?
No.
He probably has one all the time.
Yeah.
Thank you for my announcement, and thank you for having the chair recognize you for that. Counselor McGough?
Yes, sir. I also attended the city attorney meeting. I drove in the veterans' parade with the parade marshal, who was a World War II veteran, and it was a pleasure listening to his story, and what I noticed with the windows rolling down, people thanking him for his service, little kids, and that, that made me very proud. I attended a meeting with Chris Zuckin, Dave Lutkins, Mike Killking, and myself, and this was dealing with the homeless issue as well. And it's not really representative of the city council, but it's on my own time that I'm taking interest, and it's the Speedy Motel on Second Street that is, the owner of that, or the owners, would like to see it demolished and razed. But we're hoping to keep it, because it would be a great place for low-income and homeless people to develop that property, and keep it where we could, at least eight units, we could get eight people off the street. And so the owner of that property was very interested, and we're looking for ways of funding, getting the money to purchase, and we'll look down the road and keep negotiating on that property. I did attend the urban renewal along with my two fellow counselors, and we are moving forward for the sale of the Tony's Building, which is, hopefully, will take place. Historic landmark this last time was goal-setting, and we spent quite a lengthy time discussing goals. Main Street yesterday at two o'clock to four o'clock, my grandchildren, myself, and Tony Howell from the Lions Club participated and cleaned up a section of the downtown. Thank you very much, Main Street, for doing that for our city. The Elf Food Drive is coming up, the December third, fourth, and fifth, Everyone Loves a Firefighter, and they're, they're in need of people to help, especially youth, to pick up the food, and the Lions and other groups will be there to sort the food into boxes for distribution to the community. And that is my report.
Thank you, Counselor. Under the mayor's report, I also was at the suggestion of Counselor McGough, was a crossing art for Halloween festivities downtown.
And thank you very much.
You're very welcome. When I went up to Counselor McGough that evening, I asked him if we were gonna be trained, and he said, "You want to get trained?" And I said, "Yeah, I think there's some public safety issues here." So he handed me a sign that said "Slow" on one side and "Stop" on the other, and said, "That's your training, now go to your post."
That's not true.
It is true.
Thank you, Counselor Allen.
I've got a little bit more training than that.
On November fifth, I attended one of the aforementioned District Twenty-One long-term planning meetings at the, at the middle school. On November seventh, I spoke to the Quanis Club. On November the eleventh, I attended the art auction, along with Counselor Brown.
On November the eleventh, I attended the art auction along with Counselor Brown. And on November the twelfth, I attended the gorge commission meeting at Schumania. November thirteenth, I attended the, a session that was held to talk about the hiring of the new school superintendent and that was held with Cousins. And I just want to mention also to the city council that on Thursday, January sixteenth, the chamber of Congress is going to be having their annual banquet. And I think it would be nice if as many city councillors could attend that as possible. The city will pay for your ticket and we'd like to ask the city manager if she would organize, if it might be possible to get table. So. That concludes my report. Number ten is the consent agenda. Items of routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on important items and issues. Any council may request an item to be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of action items section. We only have one item on the consent agenda and that is the approval of the October twenty-eighth regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I can second that.
We moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Item eleven A of the hearings. This is a public hearing regarding short-term rental licenses in the city of the Dows. This is time scheduled for a public hearing to allow for public testimony concerning general ordinance number nineteen dash thirteen seventy-four, amending Title A of the Dow's municipal code by adding chapter eight point oh two entitled Short Term Rental License and General Ordinance number nineteen dash one three seven five, amending Title Ten of the Dow's municipal code governing Article six point oh four oh entitled Bed and Breakfast Vacation Rental. Prior to opening the public hearing, I will ask the council members if any one desires to make a disclosure or abstain from participating or voting on this matter due to a conflict of interest due to personal, due to possible personal financial gain resulting from this legislative action. After asking for declaration of any conflict of interest, I will ask for staff report. Following the staff report, I will ask persons who wish to present testimony to come to the microphone, state their name and address and present their testimony. All speakers are requested to be specific in their presentations and to focus their remarks upon the relevant issues raised by the proposed general ordinances, numbers nineteen dash one three seven four and nineteen dash one three seven five. Again, please be specific in your presentation and focus on the remarks upon the relevant issues raised by those two ordinances. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask for a declaration of any conflict of interest due to personal, possible financial gain. Does any council member wish to make a declaration?
No.
No. Hearing none, I will now ask for a staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors, Mr. Mayor, Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. I just wanted to start out with a couple of last minute formatting clerical errors that were noticed this morning. A memorandum has been provided to you. It spells out pretty specific. The, the issue is that the wrong resolution number was cited, so that is referenced page thirty-eight, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three. It should read, when it's referencing a resolution number, it should be five eight one dash nineteen. Additionally, that resolution was provided, so we have provided you with five eight one nineteen. And then there was a formatting error on pages forty-one and forty-two with an indentation of the word signs. It should not have been indented. After that, I'll get going on here. This is a two-part process. This, the adoption of the general ordinances nineteen dash one three seven four and seven five, both of them together are, are important for the process of the new short-term rental program for the city of the Dows. Over the years, around the country, we've seen, around the world really, we've seen the growth of this peer-to-peer property rental, vacation rental company. It's referenced as the sharing economy, very, very popular companies, HomeAway, VRBO, Airbnb. The length of stay usually for these, it can vary, but when you're talking short-term rentals, just about every jurisdiction as well as ours, those are stays of thirty days or less. The thing to point out is that Airbnb has gained criticism for the past few years and you can do any Google search and find out lawsuits and appeals throughout the country. For a lot of, a lot of it pertains to the protection that Airbnb has for its guests, for its customers, its guests and its hosts. A lot of times those protections go against the rules and regulations of many municipalities. Because of that, definitely throughout Oregon, communities have started modifying the current code and just trying to tighten up on these regulations. Within the city of the Dows, we administer short-term rentals through our bed and breakfast and vacation rental permit. It's Article six point oh four oh and Title Ten. This is a, a process that no fee is collected by the department. In a report to, to city council, May thirteenth, in the fee adjustment process, we, we discovered that it was taking about a little over nine and a half hours to review, process these permits with a total cost of just about three hundred and sixty dollars. As mentioned, there's no fee collected. Since, leaning on that, that growth since September two thousand and eighteen, of the twenty-two currently permitted bed and breakfast permits, eighteen of them have been approved since then. So that growth you can see in the most updated figures here for the transient room taxes where we've seen a hundred and twenty-four percent growth between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and nineteen. This, the reason we're here today, is the adoption process of a new short-term rental license which will replace the bed and breakfast vacation permit. At a legal issue seminar, Dawn and I attended this last year, there was, there's a conversation, quite a bit of conversation talking about these appeals, these lawsuits, things of that nature. And a lot, it pointed at the fact that a lot of communities are moving toward a licensing program rather than a permitting program. Difference being is you, you remove the land use side of it, there's some subjectivity that would then follow in the framework of a short-term rental license. We're more looking at if it needs or does not need or the yes and no than, yeah, like I said, that's some, some subjectivity. This short-term rental, what's in front of you, the proposed short-term rental license, it follows our current bed and breakfast, the formatting of it. However, staff, we've, the past couple of months have provided some, you know, some changes in, in fees, home inspection requirements, parking requirements and hopefully some precautions for nuisance prevention. Next little blurb, and the staff report pretty much talks about just this as being a, a multi-step process. So the first step is that we took the removal, the removal of chap, of Article six point oh four oh to planning commission, a zoning ordinance amendment ninety-nine dash one nine with the subsequent approval of resolution five eighty-one nineteen. And that recommended to city council to take the bed and breakfast permit out of Title Ten. So that will be the, the staff report that's following this. What this staff report is, is adopting or amending Title, Title Eight, a business title, and inserting this in so that this will then be under the same title as transient merchant license, transient room tax, second dealer license rather than a land use permit. As far as public outreach, staff reached out to, there was the, the proper noticing for the different meetings, but staff reached out in early September requesting some comment from current bed and breakfast holders on the twenty-two. We received four responses back. At that time, one property owner sat down, had a discussion with us in person and there was one other that provided additional comments. So, you know, there's, like I said, at the date of this document as of today, it's, we received only the four responses. So the next step is, the recommendation by staff is, is moving to adopt the general ordinance nineteen dash one three seven four, which amends Title Eight and it adds chapter eight point oh two, short-term rental license to the Dow's municipal code. And I am more than happy to take any questions.
Questions? Counsel can ask the staff questions at this time and then we'll go to public testimony. Does anybody have a state council or the questions for, for John?
I have one. Eight point oh two oh five oh license requirements, H. No short-term rental shall be used for special events during periods of transient rental. Would a birthday party be considered a special event? I mean, that seems silly, but it could be.
Yeah. And that is, you know, this is language that's definitely added in from, you know, looking at, at others. I think when it was put in there, it was the idea that these would not be used as events sites. So I guess down to a birthday party, no. I guess it's how the code currently reads. But the renting out, I think the idea around this requirement is the renting out of a space as a venue to have a party is, you know, an accessory use to the original residential dwelling. You know, residential dwelling, of course, if you, you own your own house, you have a birthday party, there's not much of an issue because that's your residence and that's the primary use. I think the language, I guess this language would restrict uses like that.
Counselor Brown?
I noticed here that most of the questions that people had for you were in regard to the fees for the licensing and home inspections. If we move to approve this, what's that going to do? I mean, basically it says here that, that, that staff providing fees have not been established at this time. It's kind of like, I guess my question is, are we approving something that we really don't have the whole story on? I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't, I don't know, I, I guess I'd be curious to know what, what change this is going to make in the financial end of it. And I, and I, I don't fully understand most of what you do.
So the action of a fee amendment to the city's current fee schedule is an action by city council. So it's something that we made sure that the actual price point of an application of a home inspection would not be included in an ordinance. In the event that a fee changes in the future, you would have to change your ordinance to reflect that change. We had intended on, on getting the fee schedule to the next meeting, however, it will be January thirteenth, we'll be presenting an amendment to the fee schedule. There's a couple of other departments, I think, that are amending some fees as well at that time. This is based off of what we did as a per room, per year. And right now we're looking at about seventy-five to a hundred dollars per room a year. And that is based on this, real, kind of around this cost recovery for it. It's, it's counted in line with the home business permit, which we recently raised to eighty-five dollars. That gives us a, what a twenty-five percent cost recovery of the actual application. So I think the idea to stay in line, I think your, our idea was kind of staying in line with the home business pricing at this time.
Seventy-five dollars doesn't sound terribly restrictive or something like that.
No, I didn't, I mean, and you're talking of, in an annual fee, so a lot of these, you know, Airbnbs, that's maybe two nights, let me pay for it. Something like that.
As a follow-up to that, you, you mentioned in, in your report that a permit typically right now costs the city about three hundred and sixty dollars. So is that all staff time or is there any other expenses associated with that number?
Yeah, it would be staff time and mailing, mailings, despite the...
Right, okay.
I thought that referred to the previous being under the land use rather than under the license. So it's different, right? It takes less staff time? Is that part of the reason for the license to help save that way as well?
Well, yeah, I guess that was the cost recovery for the bed and breakfast vacation rental permit. Since we haven't done the short-term rental license yet, we don't know what the, you know, the time it would take to review these applications. However, there is, there's, there's noticing requirements, there's, there's quite a few things preparing a staff report, preparing a notice of decision that goes into a land use process that would definitely be removed with a license. It's more, like I said, it's, it's kind of a checklist. We prepared a, an application for you and it's, like I said, it's, it's something submitted. If it doesn't meet it, then it's, it's not approved.
So you're suggesting that that worst case scenario would likely be on the watch as far as the, the fee? I mean, of what it is for the bed and breakfast as opposed to, to this ordinance? You don't expect the price to go up noticeably or could it be possible to less?
Uh, I, I guess I would, I would say that a little bit less, it would be less of a review. It's just, just my assumption at this point. I, I've handled up these eighteen, I think I've done seventeen of them, so I kind of got it down to a science.
Counselor McGlough?
Currently, there's no bed breakfast fee, correct?
Correct.
And we have a home business license fee of eighty-five dollars.
Correct.
Do we have a business license fee for a retail outlet?
Do not have a business license.
You know my next question. Why?
Because.
Because not me. I'm just saying that if we have a fee for this, this, why not this? Is that something to look down the road?
Well, actually, we are looking at that right now. You may or may not recall, last, at the beginning of the year, I asked if that was something the council would entertain discussing, so putting together some information for you too.
Well, in light of what I'm learning tonight, I would say it's very appropriate that we have a consistent licensing. It would also aid, I think, in knowing what businesses we have out there. We may not even have a registry of, we may not know what businesses. What about transient businesses that, the mobile, do they have a license?
It's coming before you, the next week.
I understand, okay. Interesting. But I would like to see consistency between all the different licenses.
I would also, however, the staff is working on that, so I'm sure something's coming for us. Any other questions? Counselor Ryan?
A little follow-up on Linda's request on eight two point oh five oh, it's H.
Correct.
No short, no short-term rental shall be used for special events during periods of transient rental. We talked about birthday parties, but what if, got some people, they want to stay, some of our folks are here for Fourth of July, even after a cherry festival, that's a event. They could not rent the room for that, they'd be in violation? Am I reading that correctly?
Now, that, the requirement wouldn't pertain to a citywide event. You could definitely, would probably garner quite a bit of attention on a July Fourth weekend, but the idea of throwing your own individual, individual July Fourth party at a short-term rental would be prohibited.
So there's broader definitions somewhere of what these apply to or do we need to have something in that line to specify what we're talking about?
Or do we need to have something in that line to specify what we're talking about there? Because I think I read it like you did, because, yeah, the special events, you know, citywide, I mean, that's why a lot of people would come here. So, maybe we need a little more definitive line there about what we're talking about. Or definitions elsewhere, if there, I know you have some definitions at the front, maybe that's one that we need to add. Okay, I will get one, eight oh two point oh two oh, you have definitions. That'd be a place where you can define that, which that means, special events. As opposed to citywide, community things, which people are going to come and want to rent rooms. Remind you, maybe I'll...
Well, so I, I'm, I'm reading it, saying no short-term rentals. That, that facility or that house cannot be used for a special event. A wedding, a reception, a party is what we're looking to avoid. And, and the big part is, is that that is a residence, and that is what it's intended for, is residential use. And adding more of a commercial component to it is going to impact that neighborhood and then cause potential reasons, issues. Family reunions, things like that, where you're coming together as a family, and you're not having a huge party might be, I mean, you're just looking for more of a definition on what a special event is at that level.
Just need to be clear, so it's down the road, and we're all going here, but this makes sense to future councils and planners who walk in the door. Let me see, maybe it's okay, I'm just verbalizing it. That's what popped up in my mind while I was at the time.
Well, my family's birthday parties are uproarous.
That's not what I've heard, and that's not what I...
Well, then, you have a blessed sheltered life.
So, what, what, what is the result of this discussion? Is the ordinance going to be changed? Or should the minutes just reflect the concern and...
Yeah, well, one possibility, you could consider maybe add some language
in that section to say, after she'll be used for special events to be conducted on the site of the short-term rental. I think that'll clarify that, and it does not clarify what are special events. I don't know, Josh, any of the ordinances you looked at actually defined that in terms of the number of people attending or the type of event? I don't know unless...
I don't think, I would have, I would have to look back and check to see, yeah.
And I mean, I think we just need to talk about it a little bit. Um, I have another question, if you can double that for the, on page two of three, second paragraph. Once an application is approved, it is the responsibility of the operator to report all stages, as the finance department, or to the finance department, who oversee the collection of the TRT, the transient rental taxes. And I was just curious about, do we follow up on that each month? Is it up to the bed and breakfast owner to report to us each month, or once a year? Or, what do we, do we send out a letter saying, hey, how many times has this happened? Or how do we keep track of that?
They, once they're licensed, part of that licensing requirement is that they file monthly reports and submit the forms at the same time.
Okay. So, we don't get those reports, then we have to follow up at that point from the, some department?
Yes.
Okay. Just curious, thank you.
Counsel McCurris?
So, I actually do have a number of questions, but I was wondering if some of those might be answered, if we had some public testimony from some of the people that I see in the audience, if this impacts? Because I'm curious about how they feel about things, not so much just about how I feel about things. Is that possible?
From procedural, we could open up the testimony now, because Counsel McLaughlin's there. So, we can do that.
I favor that.
Any other questions for the staff before we get to public testimony? I have, um, one, there's implications in here, suggestions that the existence of short-term rentals has an effect on housing values, especially in Hood River, I know we're not Hood River, but in Hood River, somebody submitted testimony before the Hood River County Plan Commission, which was littered with suggestions that short-term rentals have a adverse effect on housing values. Could you comment on that, and kind of see what happens in the Dallas as far as that comes?
Yeah, um, so, yeah, the, of course, the housing, housing cost, housing crisis is not, you know, definitely a complex issue. I have worked closely with both the planning director and the finance director of Hood River, and I was turned on to, actually, Zillow dot com has a pretty good section on one of their pages, and it's about statistics. And you can compare two cities on top of each other. One thing they pointed out to me was April two thousand seventeen is when the City of Hood River adopted their, their short-term rental license. So, I put the City of Hood River, whether this is entirely correlated as well, but putting the City of Hood River next to the City of the Dows, in that period of time, April sep, April two thousand seventeen to September two thousand nineteen, the Zillow Rent Index for the City of Hood River went up five point four percent. City of the Dows, fourteen point one percent. The median sales price in that period of time decreased six point three percent for the City of Hood River. It went up in the Dows almost fifty percent. The median list price per square foot in that period of time was a change of three point three percent, and in the depth in Hood River, in the Dows, it was thirty-nine point two. So, the argument there is capping or adding restrictions to the short-term rentals, they argue, has, has actually shown a less, a less of a spike than we've experienced here in the Dows. Granted, there's so many other factors that play into, into these numbers. You know, you could essentially say, if people are being priced out of Hood River coming to the Dows, maybe that's where we're experiencing these, this increase that we have. But that is one statistic I, I was able to pull up for you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council at this point? Okay, at this point, in the, in the public hearing, we'll ask for public testimony. If anyone here that would like to address the city council, please state your name and address, and again, you have, you have up to five minutes for your testimony. Please keep it pertinent to the two ordinances, thank you.
Dana and Crystal Ross, sixteen oh nine G Street, here in the Dows.
So, we've had an Airbnb, on Airbnb is listed as caboose cottage since two thousand sixteen. We came to the city at that time and filled out an application, did all the things that we were supposed to. One of the steps to that was the city sent letters to our neighbors, neighbors being any property within one hundred feet of ours. So, if we're on G Street, it went clear to Kelly Avenue and clear down to Fourteenth. At that time, there were no objections. Our, our application was granted. I am addressing eight oh, eight point oh two point oh nine oh, public notice. The ordinance states that they want to do, um... This was done at the initial application. I, we believe that it should only be done at the initial application, not annually. It's an expense to the city, and if there was a complaint, so if one of those people within that hold area already at the beginning, if there was a complaint, the city has the ability to pull that license. Also, we would have to reapply, and at that time, it would be recanvassed. So, I believe that only has to be done once, at the initial application, or if something was to go wrong, it would be a waste of money to do it annually.
Questions?
I agree.
I agree.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Ryan. I live at five zero eight West Twelfth Street, here in the Dows. My wife and I, Julie, and I have been running the R and R Guest House here in the Dows. Some of you may have heard of it or known of it. We, we originally put in, to be permitted as a bed and breakfast. We, at that time, we were the first Airbnb in the city. But we didn't want to do it just like Airbnb does it, which is kind of clandestine type of situation where you can, you can register with Airbnb, but you have no relationship to the city, or the transient taxes are such. My wife and I wanted to participate in a way that we collected transient taxes and paid them to the city for the purpose of supporting our Chamber of Commerce. And so, we went through the process of permitting at that time. It was probably two thousand fifteen, I think it was, or fourteen. Since then, we've hosted people from all over the world for, this was our sixth season. And just a little perspective here, as we all know, in different situations like this, there's competing interest naturally. It, it's not that people are being antagonistic, it's just there's, there's different interests that you have as the city council, we have as a owner-operator, et cetera. The, just as a perspective, my wife and I raised four kids. We were hand-to-mouth most of that time, until we moved up to Oregon, got out of Southern California. And we were, we did never have discretionary income to put away for retirement. So, using this bed and breakfast, uh, uh, business, it's considered a cottage industry. It's not a full commercial enterprise, okay? There's differences. There's a difference between a bed and breakfast, there's a difference between an inn, there's a difference between an inn and a motel, there's a difference between a motel and a hotel. So, we are at the bottom of that change, where a cottage industry, kind of one-to-one, peer-to-peer. But just as a perspective I was sharing, this is, we're using our, my wife and I are using our one main asset, our home, to now recover and start to plan for our retirement, and start to, you know, create some extra income for ourselves. So, it's, it's been quite a blessing that way. I have a couple things in the, the ordinance, or the, the changes that you are considering. I do think it needs to be scrutinized a little bit more. There's a lot of vague language in here on a number of points. And so, you, you can kind of get yourself into trouble with vague language. But a couple things, uh, real quick. On, just while you were talking about it, about the, the one stipulation, H, where it says no short-term rentals shall be used for special events. I would agree, my wife and I, we police our, our guests. So, we do, we do two different models. We do a bed and breakfast, where we are there, and we make breakfast for our guests, and we interact with them quite a bit. They only have a room in the house, and they're, they're interacting with us. We also do a house rental, okay, which is very different. In the first two years, we had difficulty with, okay, with a few parties, with a few guests doing some things that we had explicitly, and I say, I'm painfully clear with people, to the point of making them uncomfortable about the rules of the home. So, summing all this up, we have to police our guests. So, you're kind of, uh, an ordinance or a stipulation coming down on the owner-operator is, you know, is one thing, but where, where this is really going to make a difference in our community is when you have owner-operators that do a good job of policing our guests. So, when, when we have guests, we police where they park. We say it's our good neighbor policy, there's no parking in front of our neighbors' houses. Okay? We've not had any complaints. We went through the same permitting process where our neighbors were solicited. No, no comments, because they know we've done a good job. So, that's just one thing. Real quick, the other main concern I have tonight about this is the parking, uh, the parking requirement. So, Josh, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding this, but it says after one guest is item D under short-term rental, eight point zero two point zero five zero, item D, there is one parking space for each guest room. Now, this is because we're talking about off-street parking or on-street parking. That's the distinction you want to make here. So, after one guest room in the facility, so, I'm, I'm trying to get clarification here. In the past, it's been, we have, after two, we have four bedrooms in our, our unit that we rent. After two guest rooms are full, then the third and fourth require off-street parking. Is that correct? Okay, does this says after one?
I know it's one of the big changes, was in the parking.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, I, I just want to make this point because that's an encumbrance upon homeowners. By definition, these, these facilities are, can only be built at, in, in, via a residential home. These are not commercial properties, okay? So, that's an encumbrance on, on a homeowner like ourselves. If we have to somehow create off-street parking, we've made an arrangement with our neighbor who is off-street parking, that she is formally agreed to letting us use. So, that's one, just one more thing here, the inspections, I think, I'm good with all of this because I have no concern, when Julie and I went into business, we didn't have to, but we asked the fire chief to come out of our own will and inspect our home, and he did a thorough walkthrough of our home. We wanted to make sure we were proper and we were safe for people. And he gave us a, he passed us, he said, no, you, you guys recovered everything. But the inspections are going to be important as far as who's doing those, and some of the details as to what the requirements are there. One last comment. Okay, with the fees, one thing is the annual fee, but then when you start to add other fees, like home inspections or other certifications for kitchen, or whatever it might be, you want to, you might want to think about that, because that can stack up. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can we ask a question?
Sir, Mr. McLaughlin is...
I have a quick question. Do you have any opportunity or your wife to have input in this policy development?
Uh, we, yeah, we have this, the, the opportunity that Josh in his office had, had granted as far as notification.
Right.
We were unable to submit a formal comment before tonight, yeah.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the city council, part of this public hearing? Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson. Hello. Victor Johnson, five fourteen, Liberty Street, could see you all.
Could you speak up into the microphone?
Absolutely, happy to do that. Victor Johnson, five fourteen, Liberty Street, could see everyone. I actually didn't receive the notice on this, and I, in September, that Josh mentioned. I just read it just now for the first time, so I should be more proactive and, and check it out. Let me say, first of all, I have full confidence in Josh and Don and Director Harris. I think they do a great job, as all of you. And I'm probably in a rare position, I actually have vacation rental properties in other counties and things like that, James County, Cl辛 County, so I'm really familiar with all this stuff. I'll just say briefly, that all the people that are here tonight, Aggies, Ryans, and Ross, myself, we're all considered like super hosts in the Airbnb platform, which means we're the best, we have the highest rating, and all of us are actually really amazing ambassadors to the Dows. We're second people to the businesses, telling them where to eat, where to shop, bringing people in, making sure they have a good time so they come back and stuff. So, I would just say, you, which you all know, I would really consider what they have to say because they are definitely some frontline people for our community. And they really do a great job, and it's, and they're verified. They're award-winning folks, so to speak, so, anyway, that's what I have to say. Thanks for your listening.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Johnson? Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to address the council? Last call. Okay, we'll open up the discussion to the city council. Counsel McCurris?
Oh, okay, um, one quick response...
Okay, one quick response or maybe a few. There will be no annual noticing. There's only a noticing of neighborhood properties at the time of the initial application. All current, all, all current B V V permit holders will however have to go through this brand-new process. There's no grandfathering-in clause of old permit holders. Everyone will start, if this is adopted, current B V V holders, if we go through this process, we are taking that out of the code. So no longer will the B V V permit be valid. So therefore, the process for every current vacation rental needs to go through this process once again.
But five years down the road, you got to do it again.
Correct.
And does that mean you have to solicit your neighbors again?
No, I-
Just the initial?
Just the initial. The only thing that happens every five years is home inspections. We felt that this is the last, you know, this is opening your home, opening your home up to guests. They could be in all different types of shapes. And, you know, this is kind of the last opportunity to make sure that our, you know, people coming in and using these properties, they're, they're at least safe.
Thank you. Councilor Luckhurds, I think I'd like to ask you a question.
So one of the questions that I had was one that Patty Crawford emailed you. And it was, she said, "If I'm on vacation or out of the country, would I have an alternate, or could I have an alternate representative?" And I was happy to see that you basically said yes. And then the answer you gave though was pretty specific. It said that she would have to notify the community development department within seven days before she left for a vacation. And so I was wondering, like, where is that specified in the ordinance? It seems like if something is that specific as far as how it's going to be handled, it needs to also be in the ordinance so people don't violate. And they understand. I mean, seven days before or just before they go? So you always have someone you can contact within twenty-four hours?
Uh, yeah, I, you know, to be honest, I thought that was, it is actually stated in the license requirements E. That is where it talks about, the last sentence, property owners, "I shall notify the department within seven days following any change in operator."
Patty, that to mean they replace someone, like a permanent change in operator, not, yeah?
So what, okay, yeah, we can add some clarification to that. What that's designed as is, the, this requirement is a little more lax than some that I've seen. There are some that, "Contact person must be available within one hour." And without that, there is an immediate, not a revocation process, but there's essentially a strike against that, you know? So this creates the idea of hopefully party houses, you know, a way to, to control party houses. If there's a concern going on, the cops or the police department is able to call someone and be able to shut down the property.
No, I thought that was very reasonable. I just, I had missed, or I had interpreted it differently. I thought they were two separate things. And then the other question I had is, what consideration was there or was there not about making these be owner-occupied versus just rentals with no on-premise?
So that, it, I think it was thought about later on in the process. You know, we definitely, it was, as mentioned before, we, we followed the current B V V permit process, the ordinance there. And that was something that, it was not added in. We also wanted to take into account the current bed and breakfast holders and, and create something that they could still, that isn't going to, that these, we don't want these changes to make everybody's unity legal. And just looking at our current bed and breakfast inventory, we have twenty-two. Thirteen of those are owner-occupied. So if there were a language added in to require owner occupancy, we would have a decrease in, at this time, forty-one percent. But I didn't go too far into the owner-occupied language, to be honest.
You probably don't know this off the top of your head, but are those what we currently would consider a B and B, which has different definitions as Mr. Evans explaining? Or are those houses that people have purchased and they're just renting out, but rather than like a long-term rental, they're just doing it under thirty days?
Um, I guess some clarification is registered B and Bs. Of these twenty-two, I'd say maybe two of them are registered B and Bs. So I guess if you repeat the question, I'm kind of-
So maybe the question is, right now, if you register as a B and B, does that have a specific definition? Like it implies that the owner is on-site and they're cooking breakfast and you're staying in their home? Or just because of the previous language in the code, is, is that unknown to us at this point?
At this time, it is. It's, it's one of these things that I had to, after through multiple reviews, it's one of those things that I have to almost pry. Are you offering food? That is an extra step that you go through with the health department. So the, the actual numbers of all of the current bed and breakfast holders that have gone through that process, I, I am unaware. As far as the new language, there's nothing really that spells out. One thing that I think we, we moved away from was the different vacation rental, home share, all these different names. There, these are all short-term rentals. And if you're a short-term rental with a food license, then that's, then that'll be noted on the application. So are you looking, leaning more towards questions along the lines of bed and breakfasts, possibly have staff working?
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if it's reasonable to say that I would prefer these to be owner-occupied units? And what is the repercussion of that? So I'm not saying, yes, I definitely want to do that because at this point, I don't know what is my unintended consequence to existing businesses. So I guess if I was, since we don't know, if I was going to put that out there, that would be something that I'd like to propose and then have another public hearing for feedback because we really don't know at this point.
Yeah, yeah. So the, the immediate, like I said, the immediate, we'd see a decrease of about forty-one percent. I do know that there is some communities that have, like Portland, for instance, granted, the size is much different, but they have a two-hundred-and-seventy-day rule. Well, that means that an owner has to be living at their house two-hundred-and-seventy days out of the year. Most of the critics of that turn to the fact that who is monitoring people staying at their house two-hundred-and-seventy days out of the year? The other is, and I, there's a, you know, the City of Hood River does have a ninety-day, ninety days, days in a year. Minus an audit through your finance department, it's very difficult to tell who is just staying within their ninety days. Yeah, I think it's, it's something that, one thing I've noticed looking at all the different municipalities that I have, I think that is, you know, limits can be, can be difficult to, to enforce.
Well, I believe Canyon Beach has a, a rule about that. So they're trying to limit it from people just basically, you know, for the same thing, the housing crisis.
Correct.
And so I, I'm just trying to figure out what are our options so we can consider with actually knowing what's going to happen instead of just guessing or assuming.
Yeah, like I said, I, I guess I can't speak, speak to what the impacts would be.
Councilor Runn?
I want to go back to what Mrs. Ross was talking about, you know, and the others, they pulled their neighbors, et cetera. Then I realized we're going from a land use to a licensing situation. And I've also been around long enough in other venues that there are sometimes waivers for things. And I just wonder if there have been no complaints in these particular neighborhoods that we currently have licensed and whatnot. To make them go through that piece of the process again seems a little bit unwieldy. And that might be something to be considered. Is it, they have to go through the other things because it is a licensing situation, fill out the applications and whatnot? Is it really necessary to go through the neighbors again who have never complained? If they've had complaints, we would know about that through either police or through codes enforcement or something else. And that would be something I would like to consider.
Yeah, I think the, the noticing, that is a good point. Maybe one thing about this, I think to, you should all keep in mind that this is essentially a brand-new license. So these are setting aside the groundwork for every new short-term rental that comes to town, so.
I'm just saying, we have existing folks and that might be one area that they've had problems. So I would consider that as a addition, a waiver to existing B and Bs that are here, where they're named as.
Councilor Brown?
I kind of agree with Josh. I think that enforcement of the owner being on premises would be a whole new challenge. I think it would be extremely difficult and, and require somebody's staff time. I mean, some homeless, you'd almost have to be hiding around the corner to, to know if they were there. I, I, I understand the concern. I just think it would be an enforcement difficulty at best.
I think so. It's by complaint. That's like many of our ordinances. And so I think your neighbors, I mean, they know who's there, who's not. They know if it's owner-occupied or not. And you have the contact information. And if you reach out to that person a couple of times and they are in town, but they're not around and they can't show you their bedroom in the house, then they're not there.
But I think you just said it, complaint driven. If you get a complaint, you get a complaint, you can act upon it. Otherwise, there's no complaint.
Well, I don't really like the complaint.
Do we need to have somebody go up and police them?
Any other questions or comments before we close the public hearing?
I appreciate having the opportunity for people to have input. That's very important. And I think you, you understand that as well. And through this process, it's fair, equitable, affordable, and reasonable. And I think you're meeting all of those themes. So, thank you.
You?
Anything else before I close the public hearing? Public hearing is unclosed. Any more deliberation from the council or from the public staff, or give the staff some direction?
This is just the public hearing, but we have to come back at another meeting.
Yes.
Well, you could pass it tonight, of course.
You could, but I don't think we like the idea.
I have no interest in passing it tonight. However, coming back with one more time, I'm, I'm in favor of having input.
You can go to the exposition, but I shouldn't come back for something else? Something you need to clarify?
Yeah, so definition of special events. Are we looking into a waiver on neighborhood noticing or is that essentially for existing?
Were you thinking more on the line of somebody who has existing license doesn't have to pay the fee for the first, because they've already got a license? Were you looking for the fee or were you looking for going through the process?
I believe that council admits the process.
The process, okay.
So if someone already has a license, that should remain in effect, if I'm understanding correctly, as we transition over to this. And then they subject to the five-year home inspections.
Potentially using, potentially using their initial date of approval and then five years from that date. So if they're starting in here, then they would start in here. So their current license would remain.
But the current license, you don't have to have an inspection.
Correct. That is correct.
I think there should be an inspection. Isn't the inspection every five years? So what staff was saying is, you know, someone who already has a license for a short-term rental, whether it's a bed and breakfast or Airbnb, and if they've had it for four years, they get to keep their license, but we're going to call it a short-term rental. But then five years is going to be one year from now. But it would be an inspection. Oh, I'm talking about initially January one. Going from a B V V to short-term rental.
Councilor McLaughlin?
I think the other question was parking requirements and needed to be, to be clarified a little bit more. And what's off-street, what's on-site? I know Mr. Johnson will have issues with providing off-site parking.
Yeah, that's, like I mentioned, that's one thing that did change. They, currently our code reads, and it's the only use in the entire municipal code that allows a short-term rental or a vacation rental to use the street frontage in front of the property for their parking. So that's, we took that language out of this proposed ordinance. In the sense that every, and that is probably some clarification that does need that to this, this code because it was intended to read that guest, guest parking needs to be provided on-site off of the street.
After one, is that after one rental, one-room rental?
Two.
After two.
After two.
After two.
Yes.
Because of the holiday schedule, our, our December night agenda will actually be going out Wednesday. So to bring this back, we'll come in January.
And we were looking at the, we'd have to change the effective date as well.
We'll make it all for seven days.
Okay, is there any other suggestions or comments from the city council that would help direct the staff?
There's definitely one. Under the current rules, the way they are with land use and whatnot, is there a five-year thing where this all starts over again? They have to have all those inspections and whatnot?
Yeah, there is. That's why I went with the five-year for the home inspection. The home inspection, obviously, having an annual, they really didn't seem a little too much. And then five years, I think it's about, you know, between eight and ten years, you should be replacing your carbon monoxide, your fire detectors, things like that. So five years looked, you know, kind of proactive in that, in that sense.
And so again, I'm still asking for the waiver on the, the letters to the neighbors and all of that. But on the inspections and whatnot, if somebody's been in business for three years or, say, two years from now, under the new rule, they would get one? Or are you going to start a five-year period when we start this ordinance?
Well, I don't know because this all came as a curveball. So I was intending this whole time is, we start from the very beginning, everybody goes through the entire process. We get everything on the same page. That is, you know, there is a grandfathering clause, if you will, that happened in the City of Hood River, and they're doing it, they're spacing it out over seven years. If they're finding theirs over seven, in the seven years, if you're not able to meet what the current code says, you're no longer bed and breakfast. Well, this, you know, instead of including grandfather clause, adding something like that into the code, this says everybody starts out fresh. We make sure that all these things are met from the very beginning. And we do everything based on every single year, starting January first, that is when your license is valid for the year to December thirty-first. So I, I have no intent, and I don't think our department intended on any type of grandfathering clause, if you will, but if that is something that wants, that we need to take into account.
I think, in my view, that's good except for the, you know, mainly the property owners and all that. Again, unless we have had complaints. If we have complaints in the neighborhood, then everybody goes to square one or any individual that's had complaints. If there are no complaints, I don't see the value of it.
Yeah, and the noticing, what the noticing is, is most, most communities that I've found, it's either you place a placard in your front window saying that it's a short-term rental, you know, contact information, things like that. The other option, instead of a placard, is to do a neighborhood notice. So the neighborhood notice here is not intended on public, on, on comment from the neighbors. This is essentially telling your neighbors, "We are going to operate a short-term rental in this location." It, it doesn't have the comment, the fourteen-day comment period that comes with it. This is mostly just, you know, letting the neighbors know that it's going to be there instead of having what be kind of an obnoxious placard in front of your house.
That's neighbors within a hundred feet.
Yeah, within a hundred feet. Sticking with the administrative action.
Yeah, a hundred feet is pretty much.
And that could be increased, yeah. That's, currently we have a hundred feet, but that, like you said, it, it doesn't cover- That's, currently, we have a hundred feet, but that, like you said, it doesn't cover too many neighbors. And we have fifty-by-a-hundred lots, it's pretty standard, so.
Anybody wanna increase the hundred feet?
No, I think, yeah, I think most people would complain even if they didn't know if there's a bed and breakfast, if there was a problem. If there's a problem, I think they'd complain regardless of whether they got a notice or not, I would.
Counselor Brown, based on that information, where they're not taking comment, but just providing a notification of uncomfortable going ahead and doing that? So, that would be okay, the way it's written. I don't think it was clear, I didn't understand that myself, that it was just an outward notification push.
Oh, okay. Well, I could probably add some, I could.
Some of mine, thank you.
Okay, do you feel you have sufficient input from the city council to bring this back? The suggested changes, I trust, will be on January thirteenth.
So, I have a.
Counselor Brown, Chris?
Yeah, so, you asked me earlier about how we would prove residents. And what, it turns out what Hood River did is they listed ways. You could provide a copy of your voter registration, a copy of your Oregon driver's license or identification card, or a copy of your federal tax return from last year, page one only, financial information redacted. So, that's three ways you could have someone prove that they are a resident there.
Yeah, there's a difference between apartment resident and primary resident. Isn't that, a primary resident is somebody who's there all the time, whereas a primary resident could be a part-time owner, who is there two-thirds of the time.
I guess.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought at that. Is your primary resident, so that's sort of a common resident.
Well, if you provided those three documents, I would think that you consider that to be your primary residence.
Yeah, and if that's, you know, it's like, I really appreciate all the comments that have come in. I mean, I, you know, I wanted to have something that I worked, worked with y'all on, so, I appreciate that. And if that is something that, if you feel owner occupancy, we need to tighten up the language, or add language, that references those three. I do know about this three requirements, they have two of the three or something, so.
I think what I'm proposing, since we're coming back again, is that I would like public feedback. I would like people who currently are in this situation to tell us what would that mean for them. Because it's hard for me to make a decision that's gonna impact people without actually knowing what the impact is.
Since the public hearing is closed, would you like staff to maybe send up an inquiry there to the current owners? Because I think some of the people who testified earlier are not living in the home that they're renting as a short-term rental. Is that true?
I think, I think that's, maybe minus Victor, I think his house, I don't know if he's living at the one on Liberty? Oh, there we go. And I did want, to be honest, I wanted more involvement from current bed and breakfast holders. September ninth, we sent down a notice, you know, at the end of the month, if we could receive any comment, I received four. And only one was written comment, and I sat down with the Rosses to have additional conversation about it, some clarifications. But otherwise, most of the bed and breakfast permanent holders were absent in this process, unfortunately. So, I am more than happy to reach out once again and see if we can get some more hits, but.
Can we reopen just-written public comment for a specific amount of time to let people comment?
It wouldn't be considered testimony, because the hearing is closed, and that should start the process over and do all of that.
Well, I guess that's a, I guess that's my fault, as far as the process. I mean, we were having public testimony, then we were debating, and then the issue for me came up, what is this, what's the answer to this? So, you know, how can, how can we get that information from the public? That's what I'm asking. And it doesn't have to be a long period, but maybe until December fifteenth, people could write in, so the city councilors could know what people are saying.
Mm-hmm, and then, if you guys would want to include that into our staff reports, the next staff report, all the comments.
Yeah, I would like that, and then hopefully the news media will pick it up and put it in a way that people will feel compelled to respond.
As opposed to going through this whole process again?
Correct. Because we have to make a decision, I'm just saying, I want the information. Sometimes people reach out to me directly on issues, but try to make it more formal.
Okay, is that okay with you? Okay? Once again, do you feel you have sufficient input from the city council to bring this back on January thirteenth?
I believe I do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Point of clarification as an action item? Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item twelve A, we're discussing the awarding of a contract for the East Scenic Drive stabilization phase two.
I saw Mr. McAdams' part two to that.
Oh, I think that was all included.
It was, I think they will want to come back same time, because it was subject to.
It makes more sense to just shelf this one until the other meeting, because this, this next one would be actually removing it, so we would sit in a period of, you know, have a lapse period of time where there's no permit.
Okay, the East Scenic Drive stabilization phase two, Mr. McCain.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. This project is for the phase-two scenic drive stabilization. It is to install the next two-hundred-and-forty feet of solar pile retaining wall. The retaining wall will be located on the north side of Scenic Drive, and it's in that segment between Jefferson Street and Esther Way. Just for a brief background and reassurance, that this work is not related to or necessary for the historic Kelly Avenue landslide area that was done back in the nineteen-eighties. The Kelly Avenue landslide was remediated with the installation of the de-watering wells and monitoring inclinometers in the late nineteen-eighties. Since that time, we've had quarterly monitoring of the de-watering wells and those inclinometers. And it's been continued to be determined that the Kelly Avenue landslide is stable, and that it's not related to this stabilization project that we're doing. The stabilization that we are doing is a segment of about ten-foot in depth that was determined from the inclrometer monitoring that was done back in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten is when we started to see some little bit of differences in those, in the inclinometer regions. Those shallower displacements or movements have been determined to be located within the embankment fill material of the scenic drive landslide, or scenic drive, and have been determined to not, again, be related to the Kelly Avenue landslide. When we did the reconnaissance studies for that, it was determined that the solar pile retaining wall system was the best alternative for stabilizing that shallow, those shallow movements and that embankment fill material. We're just now finishing up the East Scenic Drive sanitary sewer project that we have contracted with Crestline Construction. That was to remove the sanitary sewer that went down over the hill. That's gonna be located where this, that was located where this wall is being constructed. We just issued the project significant completion on Friday, so we just have a few punchless items to take care of, but that project's pretty much complete. So, that now is done, and leaving this where we can start the stabilization project. We did, we did advertise for bids for this stabilization project. We received four bids of what Crestline Construction was the low bid amount, in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars. The city did review the bids and determine that the bids were all deemed complete. We had an engineer's estimate for this project of four-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, and so, the low bids came in below that engineer's estimate. We did have five-hundred-thousand dollars budgeted for this project in street fund thirteen, line code seventy-five-ten. So, with that, staff recommendation is to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Crestline Construction for the East Scenic Drive stabilization phase-two project, contract number two thousand nineteen dash zero one zero, in an amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars.
Any questions for Mr. McCain?
Is there any part of state money coming into this, wasn't there on the first phase?
Yes, the monies that are allocated through this are from the Oregon Surface Transportation Program, the STIP program.
Other questions for Counselor Brown?
So, looking at the staff recommendation, and we see this all the time, it was an exact dollar amount, they're not to exceed four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-seven. What about cost overruns, things happen in projects, how does that happen?
Well, yeah, I mean, if there's, if there's like a change order that comes, you're allowed, it's like up to twenty percent in change orders amount that are allowed to be granted for the project without having to come back to the city council for change orders.
There is a mechanism there for those kinds of things, thank you.
Any other questions for the staff? Do I hear a motion?
Motion, I move to authorize the city manager to enter into contract with Crestline Construction for the East Scenic Drive stabilization phase-two project, contract number two thousand nineteen dash zero one zero, in an amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars.
Second. It's been moved in second to authorize the contract? Is there any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is twelve B, post-project progressive design-build contracting, and for the contract for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of council. The city council previously adopted resolution number fourteen dash zero one four, which exempted the contract for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project from normal competitive bidding, and allowed us to use progressive design-build contracting for that project. In that resolution, two findings were adopted. One is that it was, the use of progressive design-build contracting was not, would not, excuse me, encourage favoritism or substantially diminish competition. And the second one was that it was expected to provide substantial cost savings to the city. Both state regulations and city contractor review board rules require that when a project is exempted from normal competitive bidding, that a post-project evaluation be conducted, and this report's intended to provide that evaluation. As council knows, under a normal traditional project delivery method, which we call design-build-build, there's usually two contracts that are issued, one for design and the other one for construction. And the design does not necessarily benefit from any input from the construction contractor. Under the progressive design-build, we hired, we issued a city, single contract to a design-build team, where the construction contractor is on board from day one, and has the opportunity to provide information and input into the design to help improve the efficiency of the construction of the contract. Related specifically to the findings of the resolution number fourteen dash zero one four, the first finding about it not being likely to encourage favoritism or diminish competition, the city took a number of measures to ensure that that was the case. First, before we came to the council to seek authorization to use this contracting method, staff sent out letters of, requests for letters of interest to a number of different entities. And we got a very favorable response back indicating that the project was a viable candidate for using progressive design-build contracting. With that information, staff came to the city council and got the authorization to use progressive design-build contracting. And then, we used a two-step process. The first was a request for qualifications, where statements of qualifications were received and evaluated. We then invited the top three, and it ended up being only three responders, to actually submit proposals to our request for, our request for proposals. The evaluation process, then, that was used to rank those proposals, we used five different staff members from two different departments in the city to try to be sure that we were not experiencing any favoritism in the award. We utilized a numerical rating system that was identified in the RFP, so that all the contractors knew how they would be scored prior to submitting their proposals. And ultimately, a design-build team that was led by Mortensen Construction, who was a company that had never done work for the city before, was selected. So, we think this pretty, that all of these facts demonstrate that the use of progressive design-build contracting did not encourage any favoritism in the award of the contract. Related to the second finding, that the method of contracting was likely to provide substantial cost savings. Because we exempted the project from normal competitive bidding processes, we were actually able to request some pricing information for the engineering services that we otherwise would not have been able to ask for. Through the evaluation process, it was ultimately determined to select the firm that actually had the lowest markup rate of any of the three proposing teams. Their markup rate for, on the direct cost for profit and overhead was four percent compared to five percent, or ten percent for the other two. So, that by itself saved the city an estimated hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars on the project just by having that lower markup on the, on the work to begin. I've already mentioned that the process involves the construction contractor from day one, and that allowed for a lot of conversation and decisions, value-based decisions, to be made on the most efficient way to construct the contract. We had a couple of really good examples of that during the design, when the construction contractor was suggesting modifications to what we call the grid chamber, and building it in a different way that would be faster and easier for the contractor to build, and therefore, lower cost. And another one was related to the construction of our primary filter base. Again, thereby reducing the total cost of what the project could have been. There were a number of individual specifics. We had originally anticipated that a new building would be built for the new inflow pump station. We actually were able to make the inflow pump station modifications within the existing building, so there were cost savings associated with that. We identified the opportunity to use primary filtration technology, which was pilot-tested through the process, and again, was not part of our original scope of work, which was identified through this forum of project development, involving the engineer, the project owner, the construction contractor, and the project operator, which for us is Jacobs Construction. And we identified that we could avoid the construction of new aeration basins over the next ten years, and that's a cost of about one-point-two million dollars, or a savings, excuse me, of one-point-two million dollars. The original plan identified the need for construction of a select storage tank. We were able to eliminate that, and that cost savings of one-point-four million dollars. We identified that it would be feasible to do cogeneration, the generation of electricity using methane gas to power the system, which was projected to save the operation about thirty thousand dollars a year in electrical costs. We also finally used, based all of our decisions, which alternatives to implement, based upon twenty-year lifecycle cost analysis. So, it wasn't just a, an evaluation of the cost of purchase and install equipment, but also how much to operate and maintain that equipment over twenty years. Council, that was in place at that time, what we remember, that we had a number of workshops associated with the project. We identified seven different scenarios that were all different than what was pre- We identified seven different scenarios that were all different than what was previously identified in the master plan. And in each case, we selected the scenario for implementation and provided the lowest twenty-year lifecycle cost to purchase, install, operate, maintain. And then lastly, as part of the development of a guaranteed maximum price for the project, all that pricing was done in an open book manner. We had access to all the unit costs and, and all the quantities that the contractor, excuse me, the design builder was proposing for the project, and we found all those costs to be within industry standards. The project, total guaranteed maximum price for the entire project was fourteen million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars, and we came in three thousand dollars under that. All of these factors taken together, we believe, demonstrate that this method of contracting for this project provided substantial cost savings to the city. And with that, it's staff's recommendation that council moved to accept this post-project evaluation report related to the utilization of progressive design-build contracting for contract number two thousand fifteen dash zero zero four, the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson? Mr. Councillor McGlaughlin?
I am the one remaining councillor that was at that.
I was looking around.
No, you're not.
And there have been a couple.
This was prior to your coming on, though.
No, it was not.
Anyway, we had passed substantial range increases based on projected costs that we were able to, to bring back in line and reduce, or, you know, we, have we had any price increases since that time?
We've held steady for five years now.
So, you know, what better things can we say about this project other than it's saving money, it's on time, and the new technologies that the company brought in saved substantial monies? And this is a win project. I mean, everything that's happened. So I am thrilled with how this project has turned out. And it's been a long process, but it's been very effective to the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other qu, uh, questions or comments?
Very thorough, thank you.
How about a motion to accept the post-project evaluation report?
You go ahead.
One of those two.
Move to accept this post-project evaluation report related to the utilization of progressive design-build contracting for a contract number two thousand fifteen dash zero zero four, the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project.
Yes. Oh, I'm going to second that.
It's been moved and seconded by the two oldest council members, is right.
I don't know what we're expecting here.
Consider report.
I don't think so.
Is there any more discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Final item on the agenda is adoption of a resolution accepting a dedication of a portion of property on E Seventeenth Street. That with Mr. Chandler.
Thank you. Um, it's going to end this, I think this one will be short and sweet for you. So this, Deborah, Deborah J. Tipton has requested to dedicate a portion of her property on E Seventeenth Street. It's about, you know, it's a little bit off of Morton Street. Further described in this staff report to the city for future public right-of-way purposes. Total square footage is about fifty-eight hundred square feet, and the city, future intended use would be for the expansion of East Seventeenth Street. At this time, there is no development plans for this property. Staff recommends we move to approve the adoption of resolution nineteen dash zero two eight and accept a dedication of property on E Seventeenth Street.
Any questions for Mr. Chandler? Do you hear a motion for adoption of the resolution? Councillor on Curs?
I'll move to approve the adoption of resolution nineteen dash zero two eight, accepting a dedication of property on Seventeenth Street for public street purposes. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the, uh, the resolution, nineteen dash zero two eight. Is there any more discussion or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our action items. Is there any other business to come before the city council? If not, I declare this meeting adjourned.
Thank you.